Good evening. I now call this meeting to order of the York County School Board. The regular meeting for November 25th, 2019. It's a busy time of the year and I know everybody's getting ready for Thanksgiving holiday. We have a lot of family at my house coming in, so I'm excited for that. And we can enjoy spending time with our family and our friends. So I'll now ask our pledge leader, who is William Walls, a 4th grade student at Waller Mill Elementary School, to step forward while I'll share some information about him. So William Walls is a 4th grade student at Waller Mill Elementary School. He's a huge fan of all sports and he currently plays football for the Williamsburg Hornets. William is a multi-talented young man and plays several different positions on his team, including center and quarterback. When he's not playing football with his team on Saturdays, he is playing the drums. His mom says that William loves to play all sports and really enjoys playing outside with his friends. Quote, "He's a really athletic kid." When William's at school, he's a leader on the recess field, too. He loves organizing team sports during recess with his fellow students in 4th grade. This makes him a popular guy with his classmates. His teachers say William can organize a group of students to get everyone to play along and he's the go-to guy for fun during recess periods. We at Waller Mill are proud to have William as one of our shining stars. Please stand as William leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, William. Now, we're going to move into the recognition and awards part of our meeting tonight. And as a reminder, during the break, there'll be an opportunity to take pictures for all the award recipients when we take a break at the end. We'll take a short recess for that. So we're going to move on to our Seniors of the Month, and the following students are being recognized for their achievements. And Ms. Haywood, you have the first.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I would like from Bruton High School if Caroline Arnett will stand with her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Todd and Carol Arnett. And let me share some information with you about Caroline. Caroline Arnett is Bruton's High School's November Senior of the Month. Caroline is being recognized for her passion, tenacity, and overall dedication to Bruton High School and our community. Caroline is extremely passionate about her academics as well as her advocacy. She is fascinated with science and truly enjoys all subjects. Her most important activity is her advocacy work with rare diseases and narcolepsy. She has given formal presentations to senators and members of Congress about rare diseases. Caroline has served as a guest speaker at Narcolepsy Network's annual conference and as a guest trainer for new young adult advocates. She was recently selected for the Council of Exceptional Children's Advocacy Award. In addition to Caroline's advocacy work, she's also a gifted writer and scholar. She has served on the crew of several School of the Arts productions and is a member of the Thespian's Honor Society, Scholastic Bowl, Model UN, and Chemistry Honor Society. Caroline is a captain on the Williamsburg Rowing Club. She has received highest academic honors each year at Bruton. We look forward to Caroline's continued success. And Caroline plans to attend college to major in chemistry and political science. Please join me in congratulating Caroline Arnett as Bruton's Senior of the Month.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Haywood. Now, we're going to move on to Grafton High School. Mr. Higginbotham.
Yes, Senior Olivia Smalls, please stand up, and with parents Craig and Carol Smalls, and any other family members can stand as well. It is with great pleasure that I share with you Grafton Senior of the Month, Olivia Smalls. Olivia truly embodies the Grafton spirit and it shows through all of her actions in school, outside of school, and in the community. When you see Olivia, she will always greet you with her infectious smile and ask you how your day is going. Olivia is a dedicated and determined individual. Whether it is in the classroom or on the court, she has a laser-like focus on her goals. She has challenged herself during her four years at Grafton by taking both Advanced and AP courses. She has been on honor roll all four years while participating in clubs, activities, and sports. Olivia is a member of the African-American History Club, where she serves as co-president, a member of the Key Club, FBLA, the Special Olympics Club, the National Honor Society, and the Spanish Honor Society. She participates in both volleyball and track at Grafton. Olivia has been the volleyball team captain the last two years, where she has led them to all district and all region titles. Olivia also balances her time with participation in the Coastal Hampton Roads Volleyball Club, where she also serves as team captain. After graduation, Olivia plans to continue her studies and pursue a law degree with a focus on immigration and a minor in Spanish. One of Olivia's favorite memories while at Grafton was playing in the volleyball state playoffs last year, and it was especially exciting to have all of her family there to watch and cheer her on. We are so honored to recognize Olivia tonight and we couldn't be more proud of her. Please join me in congratulating Olivia Smalls.
Thank you. And next, we have the Senior of the Month from TAB High School, and Dr. George.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Richardson. This evening, it's my pleasure to present Logan Jackson as TAB High School's Senior of the Month. Logan, stand up with your folks. Awesome, great. Logan Jackson is a do-everything kind of guy who draws little attention to himself and the process. He's an excellent student who is in the top quarter of his class. This year, Logan is completing three AP classes combined with the physical occupational therapy course and New Horizons. Logan is a four-star varsity athlete who is currently serving as a captain of the cross-country team. He will compete with indoor track, swimming, and outdoor track. He is also a member of our yearbook staff, serving as a photographer, providing a lion's share of candid photos appearing in the book. Logan takes photos at many sporting events and makes them available to coaches and teams. He is an executive officer of the Key Club and is very service-oriented. Logan is an avid Boy Scout and is on track to be awarded Eagle Scout in January. As if all of that activity is not enough, Logan is a dedicated triathlete who has won his age group in state competition and has competed nationally. Every one of Logan's days is packed, and usually a big portion of what he is doing is for the benefit of others. Because of Logan, so many good things happen in our school and community, but he does none of that for credit or recognition. He loves to be busy and he loves to help others. Every day, Logan is a role model for respecting others, working hard, and doing his absolute best. He is an excellent ambassador for TAB High School, and we are very proud to present Logan as the November Senior of the Month. Congratulations.
All right, thank you. Now, we're going to move to York High's Senior of the Month, and Mr. Medford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Annie Lang from York High School, if you'll stand, I believe you have your parents with you and your brother. All righty, for York High School, Annie is a leader at York High School and has been a great addition to the Falcon family. We are proud to recognize her as the November Senior of the Month. Annie has excelled at York High School as a student, as an athlete, and a leader. She is currently a national merit semifinalist. Last year, she was recognized as a national AP Scholar and an AP Scholar with Distinction. Due to her stellar academic performance, she holds membership in the National Honor Society, the Science National Honor Society, U Alpha Theta, and the Spanish National Honor Society. Anna has been involved in various extracurricular activities. She has competed on the York High Swim Team, Cross Country Team, and Track and Field Team. She has worked hard to earn a varsity letter in each sport. As a pianist, she has placed in several competitions, ranging from first to third place. Anna currently holds three leadership roles: as senior class president, undersecretary general of the Model United Nations, and vice president of the Science National Honor Society. Outside of school, she serves as a senior mentor of her youth group. As a senior member, she organizes meetings, teaches lessons, and leads the praise team practices. For the past four years, she has led the music department during their church's vacation Bible school. Annie, we are happy to honor you as our November Senior of the Month. We know that you will continue to soar in the next chapter of your life. Congratulations.
All right, congratulations to all the Seniors of the Month tonight. Now, we're going to move into our Student Service Awards. Dr. Shandor, I'll give you just a second to go down front. And our first Student Service Award is from Waller Mill Elementary School, Ms. Haywood.
Thank you again, Mr. Richardson. Wyatt Johns from Waller Mill will come forward with Principal, Mrs. Tremaine Hopkins. I want to share some information with you about Wyatt. Waller Mill Elementary School feels privileged to recognize Wyatt Johns as our Student Service Award Honoree. Wyatt exemplifies a commitment to his studies, demonstrates a passion to serve and lead others, and shows a positive attitude towards peers and teachers. Wyatt is a leader in my classroom, said Mr. Wyatt's teacher. Through his quiet and patient demeanor, Wyatt recognizes when fellow students need support and he quickly steps in to assist with their learning. As a peer tutor, he quickly learned how to lead a small group discussion and remediate previously taught concepts. When needed, Wyatt serves as the right-hand man for Mr. Sears. Wyatt is patient and thorough with student questions, quickly diagnoses the misunderstanding, and provides an alternate way of learning. His new and developing skills will be used to peer tutor 3rd grade students in math and reading twice a week. If that is not enough, in the community, Wyatt is in his fifth year as a Cub Scout with PAC 103. Wyatt participates in Clean the Bay Day at York River State Park and has helped clean up local parks. He also participates in food drives through his PAC. When Wyatt is not with PAC 103, he finds himself at the Heritage Humane Society. Wyatt is very fond of animals and has dedicated countless hours in care to the animals of the Heritage Humane Society. To demonstrate his passion and commitment to animal care, Wyatt has chosen to request monetary or supply donations for the Heritage Humane Society in lieu of gifts for his birthday for the past two years. When he earns money from our jobs, which is cleaning out neighbors' garages or yard work, he donates it to the Heritage Humane Society. And with all the time Wyatt spends at HHS, he has gained a new family member, Smokey, his adopted cat. In closing, since Wyatt's father has been serving overseas, he has been incredibly supportive and helpful at home. Without being asked, he has taken on many responsibilities to help his mother, like caring for the pets and helping clean the house. His actions really demonstrate his helpful and responsible character. All in all, Wyatt's academic potential, capability for leadership, and motivation to serve others, including pets, truly makes him a worthy honoree for this award. Please join me in congratulating again Wyatt Johns.
Thank you. And our next Student Service Award comes from Yorktown Middle School, Mr. Medford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kayla Swiget, if you will come up, please, with Principal of Yorktown Middle School, Scott Meadows. Kayla is a wonderful and quiet student who works very hard and loves volunteering. She has been a member of the York Middle School Youth Volunteer Corps since 6th grade. Approximately 30 students participate in this organization annually, and Kayla has always been one of the three most active members. She is very involved in her regional Youth Volunteer Corps of Hampton Roads, volunteering to the Peninsula Rescue Mission, the Gardens of Warwick Forest, and the Bounce House with mentally challenged children, just to name a few. This year, approximately 20 students from Hampton Roads area volunteered for what YVC called the Big Build Project, building an outdoor nature fenced area at Saunders Elementary in Hampton. Kayla was one of the main participants. She also participates in the YVC HR's Summer of Service, a week-long summer cap, where students do a different volunteer project each day. She was one of 12 students from the Hampton Roads area that flew to Kansas City for the National YVC Summit just about two weeks ago. At York Middle School, Kayla is very active in the yearly canned food drive, the yearly coat drive, and the canned structure team at Patrick Henry Mall. For two consecutive years, she has won first place in the middle school division and has been instrumental in our creative efforts. This school year, she has over 100 hours of volunteer service and will likely exceed 150 hours by June. Kayla is an excellent student who is committed to her academics. She has a can-do attitude and a willingness to help. Congratulations.
Thank you. And next, we have our Community Volunteers of the Month, and I have the first one, from Waller Mill Elementary School, Ms. Holly Wilkes. She could come forward with the principal, Tremaine Hopkins.
Holly Wilkes has been a Waller Mill Elementary School parent since the fall of 2018, when her daughter Vivian entered the first grade. Within a span of just one short year, Holly has jumped feet-first into volunteerism at Waller Mill. Holly's bright smile, appreciated humor, lightheartedness, and persistence for ensuring that all students at Waller Mill have what they need to succeed is such an asset to our school community. Being keenly observant is a trait Holly uses to our advantage, as she sees a need in our students and immediately takes action. Holly has worked collaboratively with Ms. Parsons, our librarian, to ensure our students have the right-fit books as they leave the library each week. She impresses upon them the importance of choosing a book that interests them the most and that is at their reading level. Holly provides an extra set of hands as students filter in and out of our media center. Her kind demeanor and warm presence gives our students the reassurance and confidence they need to ask for help. Additionally, as Holly has become acquainted with our school family, she has quickly noticed the need to bring in additional resources necessary for student success, quietly leaving gently-used clothing, food donations, and hygiene items in the counseling center. Holly's humble approach demonstrates the beautiful way our families engage in our community, especially at times when this care is needed most. Taking her involvement to the next level, Holly has accepted the nomination of PTA Secretary and works alongside our board to enhance our students' experience. Holly can be seen kindly greeting our families at our back-to-school night, tirelessly working behind the scenes at our grandparent luncheon, or motivating our students in the largest fundraising event of the year. She is dedicated to our school mission and always shares her bright smile along the way. Being a familiar face in our building has also paved the way for Holly to take ownership of her involvement, and we are delighted to share that Holly is now a substitute teacher for the Bruton School Zones. Truly bringing her involvement to a heightened level of commitment, Holly, your enthusiasm, dedication, and heart for kids truly matters, and we thank you. Congratulations.
And our next Community Volunteer of the Month is from Yorktown Middle School, Dr. George.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Richardson. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce the November Volunteer of the Month, Mrs. Teresa Bunne. And Principal Scott Meadows, if you'd come forward. It is with great pleasure that I present Mrs. Teresa Bunne as the Volunteer of the Month from Yorktown Middle School. In an age where the demands of life pull us in multiple directions, Mrs. Bunne continually makes time to support the staff, the students, and the community at Yorktown Middle School. She is a respected member of the YMS family and is involved in all areas of our school community. Mrs. Bunne's commitment to Yorktown has proven to be invaluable. She is currently the YMS PTSA President and attends all PTSA and school functions. It is rare to come to YMS and not see Mrs. Bunne volunteering somewhere. She helped kick off the school year by helping to organize our PTSA staff luncheon to welcome staff back to school and to encourage PTSA membership. As we began the school year, Mrs. Bunne served as a major PTSA presence during our open house and back-to-school night events. Mrs. Bunne then jumped feet-first into the planning and coordinating of major student events like our 6th grade dance and activity night, which helps to transition our 6th grade students and sometimes parents into the YMS community. For occasions such as this, Mrs. Bunne has played a significant role in such tasks as organizing donations, coordinating volunteers, and even cleaning up after each event. In the short time working with Mrs. Bunne, it is obvious that her focus is to provide support and positive experiences for both the students and the staff. She recently made time during the school day to meet with the YMS faculty to not only encourage the PTSA involvement, but to also gather input from the staff on what their needs are in their effort to support the students. Additionally, she has already spent time with the school activities director, planning and brainstorming end-of-year activities to recognize student achievement and to support our transitioning 8th graders. Mrs. Bunne is a significant asset to the Yorktown Middle School community and is deserving of this recognition. She serves our students and staff with energy and enthusiasm and embraces each volunteer opportunity with passion. Mrs. Bunne exemplifies Falcon pride and YMS is honored to nominate her as our Volunteer of the Month. Congratulations.
Wow, we have some great volunteers, thank you. So next, we have our York Foundation for Public Education presentation, Ms. Haywood.
Yes, thank you. As I call your name, if you will come forward, please. William Walls, who led us in our Pledge of Allegiance. We'd also like to recognize our Student Service Award recipients, Kayla and Wyatt, and our four Seniors of the Month, Caroline from Bruton, Olivia from Grafton, Logan from TAB, and Annie from York High. Special gifts from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet are being presented tonight on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education in partnership with their donor, Jeannie Faoka of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet. A Walmart gift card is also being presented to each award recipient on behalf of a foundation supporter. And with us tonight from the York Foundation is Mrs. Julie Ritchie. All right, thank you.
So our next award is from the Virginia Association of Government Archives and Records Administrators, Member of the Year Award. So I'm going to let Dr. Carol share some comments about this award.
Thank you, Chairman. Board, I'd like to raise up one of our staff members to you, as she was recognized by a professional organization recently. That staff member is George Ann McQuig. Ms. McQuig, if you'd join the superintendent. George Ann's the manager of our school board office, where she's served the division for 13 years. She recently received the Outstanding Member Award from the Virginia Association of Government Archives and Records Administrators, known as VAGARA. In the nomination letter, George Ann was cited as having wealth of knowledge in the records management arena, is the only employee of our division who educates staff on the proper record retention and processes to retain and destroy records. And it's exciting, so. And is the division's sole source for questions and concerns regarding student record issues. She's been a member of VAGARA since 2007, has been an active member since then, served on their executive board, and chaired the Public Schools Records Consortium. She's also a longtime member of the Association of Records Managers and Archivists, where she has served as the Secretary of the Tidewater Chapter. George Ann has announced her retirement from the division early June and will take with her an abundance of records knowledge. We congratulate her tonight on this honor and wish her the best in her upcoming retirement.
Well, congratulations, George Ann. And next, we're going to have our Accent on Academics from Yorktown Elementary School. So Dr. Shandor, would you share information about tonight's Accent on Academics?
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. In tonight's Accent on Academics, Yorktown Elementary School teachers and students will tell you about the nationally-recognized STEM program entitled Project Lead the Way. To share more about this project is Ms. Kelly Denny, Yorktown Elementary School Principal.
Well, good evening, Chairman Richardson, Dr. Shandor, and members of the board. It is our privilege to share the exciting work we've been doing at Yorktown Elementary School with you. Joining me tonight is Ms. Barbara Westland, STEM teacher, Ms. Katie Cooper, 3rd grade teacher, Piyoshi and Zakari Rowe, 3rd grade students. And I'd also like to recognize Ms. Tammy Kurgerek, our Assistant Principal, who is here to cheer us on from the sidelines. We are proud to be the Elementary Math, Science, and Technology Magnet School for York County School Division. In recent years, our focus has been on the synthesis of these subjects to bring STEM education to our school. Last year, we added the nationally-recognized program Project Lead the Way, or PLTW, to our magnet program. PLTW supports the vision of the York County School Division to prioritize the five Cs of instruction by facilitating collaboration between students and requiring critical thinking and creativity to problem-solve. Each of these key skills supports the development of successful students who represent the Virginia Department of Education's profile of a Virginia graduate. Last year, all teachers at YES were introduced to PLTW during August. Then, all students in 1st through 5th grades completed two integrated STEM modules over the course of 10 weeks. Our STEM teacher, Ms. Westland, was trained as a lead PLTW teacher. As classes participated in the learning, the teachers were supporting the students while also receiving timely professional development as Mrs. Westland modeled the lessons. This year, all students will complete two modules in their homeroom with their classroom teacher, while Ms. Westland supports the entire grade-level team. Based on our reflections from the first year, the 10-hour modules will be completed over 10 consecutive days rather than 10 weeks to increase continuity in the instruction. Implementing the lessons in the classroom supports our ongoing magnet mission to integrate STEM across the curriculum. Mrs. Westland will now explain the PLT program in more detail.
Good evening. Project Lead the Way's mission statement is, "We believe all students, beginning at a young age, need access to real-world applied learning experiences that empower them to gain the skills they need to thrive in college, career, and beyond." Project Lead the Way is an engaging, hands-on program that is designed to provide authentic learning experiences using the engineering design process. With each module, students complete a launch log that guides them through the five steps of the engineering design process, which are ask, explore, model, evaluate, and explain. I work with grade-level teams to plan and enhance each unit prior to instruction in order to ensure that the lessons are aligned with Virginia's standards of learning. This table highlights the topics that our students will investigate this year. The Project Lead the Way learning modules expose students to many of the 16 career clusters that align to the YCSD Strategic Plan Goal to provide career awareness and exploration opportunities at the elementary level, especially in high-demand fields of computer science, engineering, and biomedical science. Ms. Cooper will now highlight the Project Lead the Way project that she recently completed with her class.
Good evening. Our 3rd grade class just completed the Animal Adaptations Module, which aligns to the 3rd grade SOL, Science SOL, that requires students to investigate and understand that behavioral and physical adaptations allow animals to respond to life needs. It also supports English SOLs, requiring students to learn research strategies and use oral communication skills. To begin the engineering design process for the project, students were asked the question, "What adaptation does an animal need in order to survive in different habitats?" "What adaptations does an animal need in order to survive in different habitats?" They explored habitats by completing various activities on different types of adaptations. To model, students worked in teams to research an animal habitat and design a shoe that could be worn in the habitat. Those are the shoes in front of you. Then teams were tasked with creating a traveler with three adaptations. Students created a representation of their habitat that served as the background for the traveler. In their launch logs, students planned their designs and recorded their observations. The groups explained their products during a presentation to the class. During the project, I noticed that students were using great creativity with a variety of materials and thought of unique adaptations to include on their shoes and travelers. They first planned the products independently and then learned how to collaborate and compromise to make the best design. Students were highly engaged and learned to communicate effectively with their teams. Piyush Yoshi, a third grade student, will share about his experience with the project.
For our project, we had to draw shoes so a traveler or animal could wear it and protect itself and its environment. I worked with three classmates and we had their desert habitat. First, we each did our own plan for the shoe. Then we decided in a group which ideas go and we put all the ideas together. We had yellow and tan skin for camouflage. Braylon thought about horse skin on the bottom for locomotion and we thought we would walk better. Ava said, "Let's put claws," and we thought that was a good idea to help protect from a desert fox. I said the shoe should be wet because it's hot in the desert, but other people did not listen to that idea. We all had the same idea about the colors for the desert camouflage, so we agreed on that. Then all together, we were like, "This is a good idea." I like learning in Project Lead the Way and working with my team. I learned that hard work pays off. When we work as a team, the things we're making will be better. When we put ideas together, we have a huge idea that's amazing. Now Zakari will tell you about his habitat.
During Project Lead the Way, I learned that adaptations help an animal survive. For example, an elephant flaps their ears to cool down when it's hot in Africa. For the project, my habitat was swamp. To start the engineering design process, our teacher asked us, "What adaptations does an animal in your habitat need?" We started with our own drawings and then we met up together and drew every idea we made and connected them. Everybody thought about spikes. Half of us thought about flippers to swim, and I was the only one who thought about scales for protection. For camouflage, we had lily pads on our shoe. When we explained our project to the whole class, we had to say, tell, we had to say, what, tell about our habitat and why we chose different things. We had to say what creature inspired us. The alligators inspired my team. My team did argue a little about what, about what adaptation should be on the traveler, especially if we should have a tail or not. Ms. Westland told us to work together and figure it out as a team, and we finally figured it out. I like PLTW because I would rather do experiments than read from a book to learn about science. I also like working with a team. We get more ideas and the process gets done faster. This was a good project for me since I went to be a zoologist when I grew up. Learning about animals and their habitat and how they use their adaptations to survive will help me become a zoologist.
Each of you has a student-created product from the animal adaptations module in front of you. As you can see, working through the engineering design process in Project Lead the Way allows our students to work collaboratively to solve real-world problems. The program facilitates creative and critical thinking and pushes students to communicate in order to create the best models for their team. We appreciate the opportunity to share the program with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just love the imagination and they truly are having fun. They are learning and at the same time enjoying it.
Again, every time I see this, it's the same thing. That's what learning is about, to have fun and learn at the same time is the best of all worlds. So, thank you very much. Great job. So the board will now take a short recess so we can come down and meet tonight's award recipients. So we're in recess for just a few minutes.
I like that.
And unfinished business, is there any unfinished business for the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to presentation. Capital Projects Report. Dr. Shandor, if you'd like to share.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I'm going to ask Mr. Mark Sheerhart, Associate Director for Capital Plans and Projects, please come to the podium. He's going to present this month's Capital Projects Report. Mr. Sheerhart.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Here's your Capital Projects Report for the month of November. I'd like to touch on four projects this evening. The first of these is Grafton Complex, the high school and middle school HVAC replacement. So project update there is the contractors have been very busy continuing work after hours and on the weekends. They set the new generators there behind Grafton Middle School on November 5th. They've been testing those generators for the last few days, and they plan to connect them to the building on November 27th when the students are gone. Here's a picture of them setting the generators on November 5th. You can see the generators and the fuel tanks are already set here in this picture, and they're in the process of setting the sound enclosure over the generators at this point in time. The next picture here, they're completely installed. You can see the handrails are, the walkway is already installed around the generators. And in this picture, you see a trailer on the left-hand side. This is a portable load bank. They hook these, hook this up to the generators to put a fault, a false load on the generators to make sure they operate properly up to 100%. So that's what they've been doing the last three days. Dare Elementary Breezeway Enclosure. This project, Dominion Energy has completed relocating the underground cables around the Extend Center, so the contractor can now start working, working on the foundation again for the breezeway. The underground cable relocation did result in a significant delay for this project. So the dates that you see on the screen there will be moved back. We're in the process of calculating that date right now for the substantial completion. Here's a picture of the front of that breezeway at Dare Elementary School. Last month, I showed you this picture. They had, didn't have any of the brick on the front of the, brick fascia on the front of the block wall there. You see that now? And you see in the background there, they've built the concrete block walls taller. And then from the backside, you can see some of the construction going on there. Down at the bottom of the picture, you see the dirt, and this, this area here is where the Dominion power cables were running through, and they could, they had to stop building at this point, point in time. The next project is Mount Vernon Elementary School. This is a breezeway enclosure there. The floor tile, everything is installed there, floor tiles, ceiling tiles. The architects did an inspection of the space today, and we believe that the contractor will beat this substantial completion date of December 24th. We don't have the exact date yet. We're waiting for a final building inspection by the, by the Building Regulations Office. Here's a picture of what the interior of that breezeway looks like at Mount Vernon. You're looking down, you're standing right now at the front of the, at the existing building, and you're looking down to the back there. You see the glass doors at the very back there. You're looking out into the soccer field, just to give you a bearing of where this is at in school. On the left-hand side there is the, is the library doors, the new library doors. Currently, they just have one door coming out of the main hallway. Now they have two wide doors going out in this breezeway. Down the hallway a little bit further, you can't see it on the left-hand side, is a door into the computer lab. Previously, the only way to get into the computer lab, they either had to go through the library, or go through the gym, or go outside and come back into the building to get to the computer lab. Now they have a door to get into the computer lab from inside the building. And then on the right-hand side, he has several doorways there. There's a, there's a bookstore storage room, an office, and a conference room there. So this would be a very useful space and very needed space in that building. And then if you go on the outside of the back, outside of the breezeway, looking back towards the breezeway, you can see these are the exterior doors in the back there. And you can see it's not completely done. You see the concrete splash on the posts there, and the wires hanging down and things like that. So the contractors aren't finished here, but they are very, very close. The next project and the last project I'll go touch on this evening is York High School, the Learning Commons. And so the furniture did arrive, as you all know. It was nip and tuck for a while. It arrived on Thursday and was assembled on Thursday, and the grand opening was on Friday evening, and that was a great event. The students and staff are very excited about the space, and here are some pictures of the grand opening. This is looking down from the second floor balcony, and you can see it was very busy and very active. And then here are some students using the new modular seating, movable modular seating in that Learning Commons. So it was a great, great, a great grand opening and a lot of excited students there. And that is my last project for this evening. Do you have any questions for me?
Just one quick one on the Learning Commons. I haven't been by there to be able to see it yet, but I know that it's going to be something that we eventually will hopefully see in all four of our high schools. Are we using the same architectural, I mean, is that the same contract, or is it each one a separate contract, or how's that process work?
So each one is a separate contract. So we contracted with RRM, MM Architects for this project at York High School. Via Architects is doing the design for Bruton High School, and that one will be done this next summer.
So each one is a separate?
Each one is a separate project, yes.
So they'll have different look, different?
Yes, we're showing them pictures of what this looks like, you know, so they can get ideas so that we are some similarity between the schools, but it'll be done by different architectural firms.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sheerhart, for that report.
Appreciate that.
Next, we have comments from citizens, and I'll call up anyone who signed up to speak. We have two opportunities to speak this evening, the first for general topics, and the second is specifically relating to comments regarding capital improvements program and operating budget, but they're going to be back-to-back, so both, both comment periods are going to be back-to-back. The school board provides public comment period for public to comment on topics germane to the business of the school board. The board expects each speaker to be courteous modeling for our students on how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. We ask that speakers address their comments to the entire board and not to one individual board member, nor the superintendent or staff member, or the audience. Speakers will present their comments from the podium. Each speaker may speak up to three minutes. A timer is visible to the speakers from the podium, and speakers should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. The timer will not begin until you state your name and address. So our first speaker tonight is Melissa Wade.
Good evening, Chairman Richardson, school board members, Dr. Shandor, parents and senior staff. My name is Melissa Wade, and I'm president of the York Education Association. Oh, my address, 111 Hidden Lane, Seaford, Virginia 23696. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about the York Education Association's budget and policy proposals for next year's budget. We have three specific goals. One, guarantee an annual step movement and increase YCSD salary scales to be competitive. Two, protect teachers' time to teach and plan. Three, ensure the professional treatment of all YCSD employees. Under each goal, we have specific recommendations and considerations that will improve the learning and working conditions of students and staff. You have been each given a folder that contains this presentation and a copy of the YEA proposals. The YEA would like to thank the superintendent for his continued emphasis on improving compensation for YCSD employees. In the past two years, the York County School Board has approved increases in compensation for all employee groups. However, as employees, we are still considerably behind in compensation because of past pay compressions and an expansion of non-licensed salary scales to 30 steps. We are facing an acute decline in students pursuing education as a career. YCSD has unfilled elementary positions along with many secondary positions at our schools. This year, the VDOE estimates that over 1,000 teaching positions are not currently filled, and the number is expected to increase. The YEA recommends a 6% license salary increase to include a cost-of-living allowance, a step, and a restoration of frozen steps to attract and retain staff. During the last school board work session, senior staff presented information that bus driving positions are difficult to fill. It is not a surprise that inadequate compensation plays a key role in that shortage. While YCSD increases, increased the starting pay this year to $14, surrounding localities have met and exceeded that raise. Parry educators deserve better than what they received last year by moving them to a 30-step pay scale, which minimizes lifetime earnings and stretches out compensation over 30 years. Quite frankly, we don't have many employees who will take a 30-year commitment to work in a job that does not pay a living wage, as defined by the Department of Labor. The pay increases per step were too minimal, and the demands and expectations of paros continue to rise. The YEA recommends an increase of non-licensed staff to 6% and a return to 15 steps salary scale with an annual increase of steps. In addition, educators are fatiguing to the point of exhaustion. With thoughtful policy adjustments, YCSD can significantly improve the learning conditions of students and improve the working conditions of employees. You will note in your packet that the YEA further recommends reinstating tuition reimbursements for YCSD employees who are improving their practice or pursuing a teaching license, an increase in adjustment or of current stipends, and a recognition of compensation for additional duties, and a restoration of the YCSD Teachers as Leaders Program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. Thank you. So next up, we have Deb Wesley. State your name and address, and the time will start after.
Good evening, Chairman Richardson, school board members, Dr. Shandor, parents and senior staff. My name is Deb Wesley, and I'm a proud member of the York Education Association. I reside at 902 Dare Road. In order to provide the most effective instruction, planning time must be protected as unencumbered time. Most YCS teachers are facing an increase in the number of meetings mandated by administration that impact their time to plan, assess learning, and develop engaging lessons. Compounding the issue even further is the schedule, the scheduling of untimely professional development. Here's an example of some of the unrealistic demands being placed on the York County School elementary teachers in November of this year. Elementary school administration, as directed by YCSD, central staff scheduled professional development and required elementary teachers to conduct conferences while also collecting data for growth goals, completing and uploading grades for report cards, and tasking teachers with completing student reading and literacy databases. And this November, unlike in past years, Veterans Day became a student day. There was no effort to replace the lost planning time lesson or even spread out these demands. All elementary teachers were required to come in early and/or stay late to accommodate these mandates, as well as using a number of planning times during the month. Teachers were forced to limit their own family time on weekends and evenings to post grades and devote their limited family time to develop lessons across all subject areas, including the new literacy model constructs. Additionally, many teachers across the division used what should have been planning time for IEP 504 and RTI meetings. While all of these meetings might be necessary, there's not been any effort made to replace the lost planning time or to recognize the efforts of the elementary school teachers. A planning period is defined in the state code as, for middle and high school teachers, a planning period should not be less than 45 minutes during the instructional day or the equivalent of a class period, whichever is greater. And that includes passing time for class changes. In some cases, YCSD has compensated teachers for additional duties while the, excuse me, when the state planning time is not met or becomes encumbered with additional classes or a large class load. But more careful attention must be taken to ensure the planning periods are not, are not, excuse me, are unencumbered. The YEA recommends that adequate staffing be hired so that teachers have the state codified planning time, and that minimum planning periods are negatively impacted, adequate compensation is provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. And now we're going to have Ms. Johnson. State your name and address before you speak, please.
Good evening. My name is Dalila Johnson, 216 Ashton Drive. Written in Virginia state code is that planning time for elementary teachers shall be, that teachers are provided an average of 30 minutes per day during the student's school week. When a teacher has an IEP meeting, an RTI meeting, and a PLC meeting in one week, that is 135 minutes of planning time spending meetings. In this very typical situation, the elementary teacher's planning period is reduced to an average of less than 18 minutes per day. The impetus- The impetus is significant and the unencumbered planning period time schedule does not meet the state code. Even in the case of only two mandated minutes during the week, planning time is reduced to less than 30 minutes. The YEA is bringing to your attention and asks that you recognize that the reality is that there is no planning time provided on those days of unencumbered with meetings. The YEA recommends that YCSD elementary teachers' time to plan be unencumbered and protected. The YEA further recommends that professional development should not take precedence over codified planning time. If you are told to do something during planning time, it's not planning time, it's a directive. Instructional time is more effective with more planning. It's not just about the amount of time and being able to plan, but having additional time during the instructional day also means having more time to access support staff, diet technicians, campus resources. Educators are able to brainstorm instructional strategies and goals together instead of just diving into planning with limited information. Educators are able to research new strategies and share effective ideas with other faculty members. In addition, new teachers are better supported because of the ability to provide feedback. Daily or even weekly feedback makes more opportunities for new teachers to ask questions and reflect on their teaching. One cannot confer and plan at the same time. As one teacher stated, it's like trying to go to spin class and have a haircut at the same time. Only one of those things can be accomplished. If a parent calls at the beginning of my planning time, I'm conferencing and I cannot complete any instructional planning. Adequate planning time is needed for educators to be able to provide the quality education our students deserve. The YEA strongly recommends that YCSD protect educators' time to teach and plan and codify, that codified planning periods are defined by state code be met by limiting the timing of professional development, require inputs to accountability systems, and the addition to staff. Collaboration and planning time for par educators is critical to successful implementation of instruction. The YEA recommends that increasing the number of propositions be included in the budget next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bauer?
Good evening Chairman Richardson, School Board members, Dr. Shandor, fellow educators and senior staff. My name is Carol Bauer. I'm a proud member of the York Education Association and reside at 410 Lakeside Drive. Forty hours considered an average work week, yet multiple studies have shown that an average teaching work week is 52 to 60 hours. Why do I tell you that? Because we're going to be talking about professional treatment of staff. According to an analysis of professional workers, teachers work more overtime than any other profession. Working weekends and long into the evenings under intense scrutiny is detrimental to the health of educators as well as to their family and social life. And evidence shows that is clearly bad for education. Teachers have listed the lack of planning time and professional treatment as a reason for leaving the profession and as a barrier to successful implementation of evidence-based practices. Multiple climate surveys conducted by the YEA and by YCSD administration have shown that YCSD staff are dedicated to the work they do. And as a result, they would like administration to be intentional and seriously consider their efforts, suggestions, and input as a well-respected and contributing partner in the many daily and overarching decisions that impact their students and their working conditions. YCSD has cumbersome policies and accountability systems that often require a duplication of effort and result in few or no actionable steps that improve instruction. Teaching is more complex than ever before as educators evaluate student growth and achievement, implement social and emotional learning programs, and plan learning for an increasingly diverse student population. Every year, I have a new class and things that worked last year may not actually work this year. This year, my 17 boys in my 28-student class, the things that worked this year are different than the things that worked last year. Each year is different and so mandating or prescribing specific teaching behaviors ultimately lead to unintentional repercussions. Custodial staff I'd like to talk about for just a moment. They work hard and often move from building to building. Many staff are moved with little notice or consideration to the desires of the employee. Additionally, longevity at a building which leads to community connections should be considered and given proper priority for staff placement. In an effort to be equitable, custodial staff should be issued work shoes in a similar manner as a maintenance staff as well as other safety equipment. To help maintain the buildings, cleaning equipment such as vacuums and buffers should be routinely upgraded and improved. The YEA also recommends that on days that students are not in the building, that custodial staff be allowed to adjust their work schedule. Also, a probationary period of 18 months is much longer than is needed to determine if custodial staff are reliable. The YEA recommends that the probationary period for custodial staff be reduced to six months.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer. Next, it's Sabina Booth.
Good evening Chairman Richardson, School Board members, Dr. Shandor, parents and senior staff. My name is Sabina Booth and I'm a proud member of the York Education Association. I reside at 502 Robin Hood Drive, Yorktown, Virginia. I think many of you can appreciate and recognize that it's always better to take someone with you to the doctor, especially when you might be under stress and be given specific instructions for your healthcare. The same is true for York County School Division employees who might find themselves in a stressful situation surrounding their employment. Thank you to Dr. Shandor for your support and validation of the need to develop a silent witness policy to allow employees to have a supportive person who is there to help them understand what was discussed during a meeting. The YEA met with Dr. Shandor previously and we have presented a sample silent witness policy for consideration. The VEA recommends implementing a silent witness policy for all employees as soon as possible. YEA believes that granting silent witness rights will help prevent misunderstandings, intimidation, and violations of civility because it will allow parties to cool off before engaging in dialogue. Oftentimes, it's human nature to convey feelings of a coworker, a subordinate, or supervisor that are rash and purely based on emotions. In other words, people sometimes utter unregrettable comments in the heat of a moment. Pumping the brakes and asking for a formal meeting will prevent these situations and also help keep parties accountable for statements made. Finally, silent witness rights help bring equilibrium to the power and balance inherent during meetings when one or more supervisors are addressing an employee. The VEA recommends that employees be allowed by policy to have someone with them in any disciplinary meetings. This person is not there to present arguments or dispute against administrators but to help the educators listen and understand what is happening. Having someone with you might reduce stress. Someone who supports you is a bit, but is a bit removed and better able to absorb what is being said and asked of the employee. This also has the effect of having someone who could be there in case a teacher reacts badly. Now I'd like to switch gears and talk about technology. As you prepare the budget, please consider current and future technology needs of the division. Some significant issues include the negative impact and timing of rollouts of new software platforms, the downtime of computers, long lag times for faculty and student logins, and the elimination of access to printers for student work, which has been virtually eliminated. Faculty also face reduced access to programs that they used previously. Employees should have the ability to be issued school laptops or devices for required work at home. Because of the experiences the employees have faced recently, the YEA recommends that no new software or platform updates take place during high demand periods such as grading windows or back-to-school registration periods.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Pam Gaspard, our next speaker. Pass? Oh, okay. Ireland Johnson is our last speaker then.
Good evening. My name is Ireland Johnson and I reside at 216 Ashton Drive, Yorktown, Virginia 23690. And I'm a proud member of the York Education Association. I yield my time to Melissa Wade, President of the York Education Association.
You're not allowed to yield your time, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to hand up shirts and say thank you.
She can, yeah.
Well, thank you for your attention tonight. The YEA recognizes the important job you have before to assess the needs of the students, staff, and the community. Please contact Melissa Wade if you have any questions about the YEA recommendations presented tonight.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
She's a six.
Okay.
The T-shirts we're giving to you are red, of course, to show your support for public education. Please remember to fund our future.
Very nice.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I appreciate that.
I can still come here next year, come to a meeting with you all where? Can I come to a meeting in January and wear this with you?
Yay!
I'll be on the other side.
If I'm not the right size, I'll make sure you guys give it a present.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to close that public comment period and we're going to move on to public forum on goals, objectives for the FY21 Capital Improvements Program and Operating Budget. Dr. Shandor, you have some comments to share before we open the public comment.
Yeah, someone asked Mr. Bowen if he'll please come to the podium to just give a little bit more information related to the goals and objectives of the FY21 Capital Improvements Program. Mr. Bowen?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mr. Richardson, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to kick off the public forum this evening. I did want to just remind the community this evening that at the work session in November, Dr. Carroll and Mr. Shearhart presented the facility, six-year facilities master plan. This is the document that serves as the basis for our CIP plan that we'll be presenting formally at the work session in December. I did want to highlight a couple of things because one of, one of the topics of that meeting in November was about capacity and the capacity issues we're experiencing in the lower part of our county. So there's three projects I'd like to point out that have either been added to the CIP or have been moved up on the CIP schedule. First is Dare Elementary School, six-to-eight classroom expansion. This is a new project with A&E work proposed in FY21 and construction in FY22 and 23. Second was the Seaford Elementary School expansion. We were originally planning for a six-to-eight classroom expansion. We're now looking at a potential 12-classroom expansion with the A&E work was originally expected to commence in FY21. However, we are proposing that the A&E work begin this fiscal year. So I have an action item on the agenda this evening for the board to take action on approving the transfer of $450,000 in revenue stabilization funds. And this money, $450,000, would be used to jumpstart that A&E this spring. This is just the first step in that process. If the board approves that, then this goes to the board of supervisors for their consideration and approval. And third, we've added a preschool center as an option to help alleviate some of the capacity issues, but we also believe in doing so, this will aid the staff in delivery of services to our pre-case, pre-case students. We're meeting with the county staff next week to continue talks about our proposed CIP and funding. And in our December work session, we will report out on the superintendent's proposed CIP. Now, on the operating budget side, I'll remind you, this is the first year, FY21 is the first year of the state's biennial budget, and there are a couple of things that take place prior to the governor's release of his budget, which will be December 17th, 2019. First of all, there's the re-benchmarking of education costs. Second, there's the update in the local composite index. And third, there's the, the update on the contribution rates for the Virginia retirement system. We don't know much at this point about the total cost of re-benchmarking, what that might mean to YCSD. However, what we do know is that the state of the economy is still very strong, particularly in Virginia, so we are anticipating that there are going to be funds available. However, what we're hearing from Richmond at this point is that much of the new funds may be distributed on some equity formula. So we don't know what that is, but what that might mean to us is we might, we'll get, we'll get new funding, but it may not be as big as we've received in the past two years based on economic disadvantaged population. The local composite index for all localities has been released and the LCI for York County has decreased by a tenth of 1%. While the rate is heading in the right direction, so when the rate decreases, it means the state pays for more of the cost of education. That decrease is really not enough to, to provide us or be a significant impact to our state funding. And third, the VRS Board of Trustees approve rates for the next two years and the contribution rates for teachers and other professional employees are proposed to increase from 15.68% to 16.62%, so 0.94 percentage points. This will be an impact to us. The last time this changed, it went down by 0.83 percentage points and it was about $450,000 in additional savings to us that we didn't have to pay. So our costs are going to increase related to VRS. But the good news is that these right now are just proposed rates. The VRS Board of Trustees, they vote on the rates based on the, the performance of the stock market. Then the governor and the General Assembly can take specific action to either adopt these rates or choose something either less. And hopefully in this case, that's what, that's what will happen. But we won't see that action probably until the state completes its budget process in March. So that's just kickoff this evening for the public forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Appreciate it.
Any questions? Okay. We're going to open up the public forum on goals and objectives and capital improvements and operating budget. And the only person signed up to speak, Ms. Bauer.
Good evening Chairman Richardson, School Board members, Dr. Shandor, fellow educators and senior staff. My name is Carol Bauer and I reside at 410 Lakeside Drive. I'm a proud member of the York Education Association. Thank you, Mr. Bowen, for that update on the budget. As you know, it is a biennial budget and, and we are never at a loss of how to spend that money. So we're here tonight to share some of those ideas. We didn't get a chance to explain to you in your packet that there's actual prepared comments on one side and proposal on the other side. We didn't get a chance to say some of the other things that we wanted to talk about. But speaking specifically about the capital improvement plan, we appreciate the time and effort that has gone into it. I think many of us here know that the capacity at some of our buildings are limited and we have, we have full classrooms and we need additional space. So we appreciate every consideration you make into increasing the space and the ability for staff to do their jobs. I also felt the need to come and talk about capital improvement because my LEGO team is interested in having some universally designed play equipment. And they have addressed the school board and they've written letters to the school board. As you look at improving our facilities and as you look at capital improvement plans, I think some attention should be made to see whether we can make wheelchair-accessible and universally-designed playground equipment. It's been a number of years since the playgrounds have been upgraded and if you need some ideas, I'm sure there are people, my LEGO team, would love to tell you about them. Thank you so very much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bauer. Appreciate that. So at this point, there's no one else signed up to speak. I'm going to close the public forum on the goals and objectives of FY21 Capital Improvements Program and Operating Budget. And we're going to move on to board matters, or matters by board members, actually. Sir Mr. Higginbotham, I'll let you start.
Sure. I got to go out and see a couple of things the last few weeks. The Learning Commons at York High School, that opening was incredible to see the facilities and just hearing about everything beforehand and then to see it in person. And I tried to take some pictures and, and I went back and I looked at them and I put some on Twitter, but it really doesn't do it justice with how amazing that facility is. But then the last, you know, week or so, seeing all the pictures that people have been posting of students utilizing that facility and the teachers bringing their classes in and not just all focused in one place, just having so many opportunities to go within that Learning Commons is just great to see and I'm excited to see the other schools getting their designs as, as the years go on. I also got to go to Grafton High School and see their one-act performances. They did two different one-acts. The first one in particular I thought was really funny as the main character that was a young teenage male who was embarrassed of his family. So he hired actors to pretend to be his family to introduce to his girlfriend he was bringing home for the first time. And then, of course, you know, just insanity ensued as the family came home, or the actual family came home early. But the kids did a wonderful job with those one-acts and it was a great evening that I got to spend watching that. And I also got to see the fourth and fifth grade students do their musical production at Coventry last week. And it's just great to see them, although the parents, I think, sometimes are more excited than the, than the kids on stage. So many like giant iPads just being held up to film the, the songs that they were singing. But the energy the kids had on stage was wonderful and I just want to thank Ms. McDonough for putting that together and all of the teachers who stayed and came late to, to be with their classes for that production, so. And I just wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving coming up.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Medford?
Lack of voice this evening before it leaves me, but I'm just going to wish everybody a wonderful Thanksgiving. Lot of, lot of things going on and as we move into the holiday season, just keep the momentum and that's all.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Haywood.
Thank you. I had the opportunity last week to visit McGruder to read to a kindergarten group and to then visit Wall and Mill and talk to their student leader, student advisory leaders, fourth and fifth graders that are identified as leaders in the school and the kinds of things that they are thinking about doing for their school. And it was, it was great just to sit around the table and, and listen to their comments. We also had a Virginia School Boards Association state conference here last week. We also had a Virginia School Boards Association State Conference here last week, and I want to highlight one of the speakers, Dr. Shandor. You said you have Dr. Brown's book on the shelf. But Dr. Lavelle Brown, who is a superintendent in Ithaca, New York, from Flavanna County, knows Albemarle County real well, but he talked about equity and equality. And it was, I had a chance to talk to him after the session, and again, that has been one of my biggies for this school division as we move forward. Also, think about, I know we talked about at the last work session, some data coming from our schools, and we've made great strides, and how can we still continue to do that? One of the other things that I've watched, and I don't know if we use it or how we use it, the $100 race that's on YouTube that speaks to race equity and equality. And with that, I am going to say during the funeral of Mr. Elijah Cummings, Congressman Cummings, one of his speeches they played back, and I think it's so, so important to understand it. His comment was, "Our children are a living message we send to a future that we will not see." So, you think about it. We prepare our kids to go forward into a future that we ourselves may not see that future. And with that, have a wonderfully blessed Thanksgiving, Eliot Turkey, and we'll see you in the new year? I mean, in December.
December.
December. Not the new year, but December. All right. I'm rushing it. I'm rushing it.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. Dr. George?
Yes, hi. Don't have a lot to report since the last time. I feel like I just want to mention, we were all blessed to be able to go to a retirement dinner for our Dr. Guy. That was a wonderful bittersweet thing, but I believe this may be your last Monday evening televised meeting with us?
Yes.
Okay. Well, maybe we can get a cutout or something and hold it there while she's sitting there, but you know we'll miss you for sure. You know, this time of year, I can't help it, I just get sentimental because I think of just being thankful for everything we have, and, you know, I can't help think the three families that lost those kids, you know, not that long ago, and just, you know, what that really ought to mean to all of us on a daily basis. Thanksgiving really is not about one day, but it's really about every day. And I started thinking, and I thought, you know, what's, the word that pops into my mind is gratitude. And, you know, I looked, and gratitude is defined as the quality of being thankful. It's been said gratitude makes sense of our past, brings peace for today, and creates a vision for tomorrow. Gratitude actually turns what we have into enough all of a sudden. And I just reminded that in my life, I try to enjoy the little things because one day I may look back and realize that they were really the big things that mattered. So, I just encourage everybody to have a wonderful Thanksgiving, you know, hug those that you love, and I got you crying over here, Karen, sorry. Hug those that you love and just make the best out of all those moments and just have a wonderful time and be thankful for sure. Okay, that's all I've got. Thank you for indulging me a little bit.
Thank you, Dr. George. Thank you. So, just a little bit about what I've done for the month. I did go to the York High School Learning Commons opening, and I think the first room I went into, some students were in there, and they had the screen up, and they were doing a virtual field trip to a museum in Hawaii. So, it was just neat to see the technology and the different things the kids using it, seeing the pictures later on of the kids actually utilizing the space and the excitement, even talking to some teachers that were excited. So, again, teachers that are here tonight, thank you again for all you do for our students and our division. I was a guest speaker at McGruder Elementary School, was able to read to the kindergarteners there, too. It's always fun to do. Have a WHRO board meeting coming up next week, so I'll be busy next week as well after the Thanksgiving holiday. But I was also at the VSBA conference in Weasberg with Ms. Haywood, and the speakers in the classes were great. It was a great experience, learned a lot. You always come away with something from any of those conferences that we go to. But again, everybody have a happy Thanksgiving, and thank you again for all you do. So, we're going to move on with our financial matters, and I'm going to ask Ms. Haywood to discuss financial matters at this time.
Thank you very much regarding certificate for approvals of claims, and this runs from October the 1st to October 28th of this year in the amount of $6,317,189.39. We have claims certified for payment for the month of October. The significant expenditures include instructional-related expenditures that totaled about $233,000 and included payments to New Horizons for $151,600 for special education tuition, to Women Mary for $31,590 for tuition for the fall cohort, and to Teach for $28,000 for professional development. Payments for technology-related items totaled approximately $107,000, which included payments to Remind.com for $32,400 for the division-wide communication platform, to Cox Communications for $24,300 for internet services, to Virginia Business Systems for $17,700 for copier services, to CWD for $32,800 for Chromebooks, and charging stations for CTE classes and technology for the York High Learning Commons. Payments related to administration totaled $14,045 and included a payment to Cherry Burkhardt for audit of the school activity funds. Payments related to food service totaled $329,816 and included payments to Sodexo for $258,100 for food service operations. Heartland Payment Systems for $71,816 for food service financial system. Payments related to transportation totaled $195,200 and included payments to Kingmore Supply for two new buses. Payments related to capital projects totaled $811,582 and included payments to LaFob Construction for $295,400 for roof replacement at Coventry Elementary. Heartland Construction for $220,864 for work at the Grafton Complex. Vitexco for $170,939 for work at TAB Elementary. And Continental Contractors for $98,950 for repairs to the York High bathrooms and painting at Dare Elementary. Payments related to operations and maintenance totaled $181,500 and included payments to Dominion Energy for $171,200 for utility services, and Republic Services for $10,300 for waste Now, moving to consideration of approval of financial reports with respective significant changes relating to the operating budget. The October revenues focused on local revenue for October 2019 is down by $140,000 from October 2018 as summer school tuition was not transferred until November of 2019. The state revenue for October 2019 is up more than $1.1 million when compared to October of 2018. This increase is due to approved state funding increases for FY 20 and increases in student enrollment. The federal revenue for October of 2019 is down by more than $972,000 from October of 2018. This is due to the fact that the federal Impact Aid revenue is not received on any regular or scheduled basis. For expenditures, instructional expenditures are approximately $2 million higher in October of 2019 than in 2018. This is due to the increase in instructional and support staff required for growth and the staff compensation increase for FY 20. Significant changes related to the food service budget. For revenue and expenditures, food service revenue for October 2019 is approximately $144,000 higher than in October of 2018. This is a result of there being five less school days in the fall of 2018 for inclement weather and an increase in student enrollment and participation in 2019. The food service expenditures are approximately $36,000 higher in October 2019 than 2018. This is due to the increase in student enrollment and participation. And now, moving to consideration of approval of Resolution 19-62, a resolution authorizing a specific procurement. Resolution 19-Dex-62 requires the board's approval authorizing procurements of more than $50,000, and there are two items in this resolution. One is the installation of modular classroom building at Grafton Bethel for an amount of $112,020, and additional work at TAB Elementary for HVAC/roof replacement for $70,000. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I move a motion to accept the financial report for October 2019 and to approve Resolution 19-62.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Ms. Ford?
My motion's made by Mrs. Haywood and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham to approve financial matters as listed. Board members, you may cast your votes. Thank you, and the motion passed 5 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Next, we move on to the consent calendar, and I'm going to list it over briefly. Approval of personnel actions, approval of donations in the amount of $350,000, consideration of a motion to approve an overnight field trip from Mount Vernon Elementary, Grafton Bethel Elementary, and Yorktown Elementary for the first LEGO League team competition, I believe that's in Harrisonburg, approval of the minutes of the work session for October 14th, 2019, and a special meeting for October 28th, 2019. Are there any items that need to be pulled? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as listed?
I move motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Ms. Ford?
My motion's made by Dr. George and seconded by Mrs. Haywood to approve the consent calendar as listed. Board members, you may cast your votes. Dr. George?
I don't see it.
I'll mark you. Dr. George?
Yes.
Okay. The motion did pass 5 to 0. Thank you, board members.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Next, we're going to move to our action items. Approval of a motion to approve and request the Board of Supervisors to approve the transfer of the Revenue Stabilization Reserve Fund of $2,409,651 in FY 19, local end-of-year reversion funds created by Impact Aid receipts over the budget of the amount. Dr. Shandor?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Mr. Bowen to come forward. He can actually cover some information related to items A, B, and C under action.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mr. Richardson, members of the board. The first item this evening is Impact Aid revenue that we received over our baseline budget. And our baseline budget, and this is put in agreement with the county, eight and a half million dollars is in our budget to cover Impact Aid receipts. So, when the funds come in that are greater than that amount, those funds go back to the county, and they are held in the Revenue Stabilization Fund. And then, when funds come in less than that, then that gives us an opportunity to draw on that Revenue Stabilization Fund. So, in this case, last year, we had $2.4 million in excess of the eight and a half million of the baseline.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion and a second to approve and to request the Board of Supervisors to approve the transfer of the Revenue Stabilization Reserve Fund of $2,409,651 in FY 19, local end-of-year reversion funds created by the Impact Aid receipts over the budget of the amount?
I move approval. Second.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion was made, I'm sorry, was that Mr. Higginbotham did the second?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Ford.
Okay, thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Medford and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham to approve the motion, and you may cast your votes. And Dr. George?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passed 5 to 0. Thank you.
Next, we have the approval of Resolution 19-61, a resolution to request the County Board of Supervisors to approve the transfer of $450,000 from the Revenue Stabilization Reserve Fund to the School Division Capital Projects Fund and to approve the funds for architectural and engineering services to the expansion of the Seaford Elementary School. I believe...
Yeah, Mr. Bowen covered that earlier. I don't know if there's further explanation, board's leg?
Uh-uh.
Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All right. Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion was made by Mr. Medford and seconded by Mrs. Haywood to approve the motion. You may cast your votes.
I moved and Robbie seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Does my voice sound like yours?
I know.
It definitely does. Thank you.
You're getting higher in your voice.
A motion was made by Mrs. Haywood and seconded by Dr. George. Okay, the motion passed 5 to 0. Thank you.
And next, we have a question, a motion to request the Board of Supervisors to approve, appropriate, I'm sorry, the School Division's FY 19 Operating Budget End-of-Year Fiscal Year Reversion Carryover Funds exclusive of Impact Aid receipts over the revenue budget line item for Impact Aid totaling $917,706.05 for cash capital projects and for the replacement of instructional technology.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Ms. Bowen? Shandor, Mr. Richardson, members of the board. So, this was, $917,000 represents our end-of-year fund balance, and those end-of-year funds automatically revert to the county. So, this is a process that we just ask for the county to return those funds back to us so that we can use those funds for specific projects, use that for cash. The majority will be used or dedicated to cash capital, and that will eventually offset the debt service that the county incurs on behalf of the School Division for its projects.
I'd already read it in a note, so...
Move approval.
All right. Is there a second? Thank you.
Was that you, Mr. Medford, for the second?
Yes.
A motion was made by Mrs. Haywood and seconded by Mr. Medford to approve the motion. You may cast your votes.
It's not coming up. Do you want us to mind just a minute?
Okay, finally.
Okay, and the motion passed 5 to 0. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, we're going to move into policy discussion, Policy Section A, Foundations of Basic Commitments of the York County School Board Policy Manual. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Dr. Guy's going to come to the podium for one of her last presentations. Go ahead. Dr. Guy?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Good evening, Mr. Richardson, members of the board. This evening, Section A, Foundations and Basic Commitments comes before the Board for quadrennial review. Most of the proposed revisions are a result of alignment with Virginia School Boards Association Policy Manual and do not substantially change practice. Two new files were added. File AD, Educational Philosophy, which speaks to the Board's commitment to providing an equal opportunity for every student to achieve maximum growth, and File AF, Comprehensive Plan, which aligns with Division practices for our strategic plan, facilities master plan, and capital improvements plan. The remaining files in Section A were retained with editorial changes only. Section A will come back to the Board for first reading in December. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guy. Next, we have the discussions on the policy file IGBC, Parent and Family Engagement of the York County School Board Policy Manual. Dr. Shandor?
Yes, Dr. Guy's going to have some comments related to this matter as well.
Thank you. File IGBC, Parent and Family Engagement comes before the Board this evening for annual review. Section 1116 of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act requires local school divisions to develop a written parent and family engagement policy jointly with parents and family members of participating children. It also requires that parents and family members are involved in an annual evaluation of the plan. File IGBC was developed with input from parents of children participating in the YCSD Title I Part A program. On June 7th, 2019, a division-wide Title I Parent Advisory Council meeting was held. During that meeting, file IGBC was reviewed, and no changes were recommended by participants. Proposed revisions in this document are limited to those that are editorial in nature and intended to ensure consistent use of, excuse me, vocabulary throughout the document. File IGBC... File IGBC will come back in December for second reading and approval. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have discussion. Oh, any questions on that one? Sorry. Next, we have discussion on proposed policy GAD, digital communications. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Our chief human resource officer, Dr. Vladu, is going to share comments related to this policy.
Good evening, Mr. Richardson, chairman of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Tonight, I bring before you a newly drafted digital communication policy, GAD under section G, Personnel Policy Section. The draft policy before you was reviewed by the superintendent, cabinet, and the division attorney. As you'll remember, the FY '20 budget provides the funding to implement a texting platform to make our communications with our students and families more efficient as well as make them easier. The draft policy will provide guidance for division staff and teacher to use digital communications. The division has plans to implement this communication feature beginning with the second semester or the end of January 2020. As such, we're asking to bring this policy before you for a second reading at the December meeting. At this time, I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Just for clarification, that's for, so teachers or administrators or anyone knows how to communicate with students back and forth during their interaction with them.
Exactly. Many of our teachers are using something like Remind. This will provide them with additional features to reach out with our families and create those, those groups, the kind of things that our staff, coaches, and teachers would need to communicate with families.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vladu.
Thank you, Dr. Vladu, for that. And Dr. Guy, for your presentations as well. So, now, we're going to move on to our first reading policy, first reading of section H, negotiations with York County School Board Policy Manual.
There are no changes from the last one.
Okay. No changes at all. So, we have no second readings. And report of the superintendent, Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Just a few items this evening. Our staff continues to have budget discussions. Did want to share that we are holding a community budget input sessions at Queens Lake Middle School on December 4th and another one at Grafton Middle on December 11th. Both of those will begin at, begin at 6:30. Last Wednesday and Thursday, I attended the Virginia School Board Association Annual Convention as well with, with many members of the school board. There were some really good sessions there as well. I would certainly concur with that. We also had an opportunity to meet with VAS, which is the Virginia Association of School Superintendents. We had a quite, quite a lengthy meeting related to a number of different topics with literacy being number one. Also, on number 12, November 12th, I had the opportunity to celebrate the success of the National Math and Science Initiative at Grafton High and, and, I'm sorry, at Grafton High, for Grafton High and York High School. I want to extend my thanks to everyone who was involved in contributing to the success of this program. This grant will bring nearly $600,000 to the school division. So, we're really excited about that program. And finally, I want to extend my deep appreciation for one of my good friends, Dr. Stephanie Guy. She has worked here for 22 years in YCSD. She began in 1997 as an assistant principal at TAB High School. She then served in other areas before becoming our chief academic officer in 2010. She has always maintained the highest level of professional integrity and dedication. She has also provided invaluable insight and experience, which has greatly enhanced the educational opportunity for many students throughout the years here in YCSD. I want to thank her for being such a supportive staff member, to me personally, and wish her the best as she embarks on the next phase of her life. So, her last day with us is December 6th. With that, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and fun for everyone and their families and enjoy the time away.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Shandor. So, unfortunately, board members, I need you to stick around. We're in need of a closed session. We're in need of a closed session to discuss an actual possible litigation. So, could I have a board member please take us into closed session?
I move that the York County School Board meeting in closed session pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-371187 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act to consult with legal counsel regarding actual or probable litigation.
Second. Ms. Ford?
A motion was made by Mrs. Haywood and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham for the board to go into closed session. Board members, you may cast your votes.
I clicked off to, yes, we, I approve.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
George? Yes. The motion passed and you're now in closed session.
Thank you. We'll be back for our work session Monday, December 9th. Enjoy your Thanksgiving holiday and have a safe weekend. Thank you.